Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:15, and I will convene this governance meeting of the Burnsville City Council. The clerk will note that all members of the council and staff are present, and this meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Council members and staff are in council chambers. Members of the public may attend in person if they like, or the public can watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16, or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. And now, I will introduce our city manager, Greg Lindberg, who will give us some opening remarks about the participatory budgeting process.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you are well aware, your governance process has a three or four-meeting structure. This being the first is intended to be staff's presentation of a white paper. Said a different way, we've done an environmental scan that looks at the topic, and tonight's purpose is really for staff just to inform you of what we found, certainly highlight some of the research that we've done and the scan that was completed. We're going to do that by way of kind of a team presentation. There's a lot of materials in front of you. There's a lot of material that was in your packet. Printed copies are in front of you. The one thing that wasn't in your packet that we did have, that we did receive since we published the paper and provided copies to the community is a city attorney opinion. So that's actually in the back of your printed copy. It is largely reflective of the content in the paper that you've already seen, but it was the one thing that we couldn't directly reference and link in the paper for you, so we wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it. Obviously, the city attorney is with us this evening and certainly can answer any questions regarding it. I would say that this was a significant team effort over the course of the past three months. I'm very grateful for the hard work that went into developing the white paper and doing our research. We learned a lot, and we're excited to share that with you tonight. I will say that our presentation is planned to be informative and high-level, so we're certainly happy to answer questions as we go along, but we also are planning on being efficient with presenting the information both to you and for the benefit of the community. Really, our purpose tonight is just that, to provide you with that update and highlight the research, and prepare us then for the next steps of the process. Our next meeting in June, the team will kind of cover with you, but it will be an expert's testimony as it's outlined in our governance policies, followed by public comment, and then a fourth and final meeting that's designed for the council to dialogue, discuss the issue, and then provide any sort of direction that you wish to staff. So with that, in front of you is a slide that has about 30 people's names on it from across our organization. One of the things that I believe that I'm most proud of, of this process, is we really didn't use outside experts or consultants. The research, the writing, and the development of the scan and the white paper was by and large completed by staff internal to the organization. We circled people based on their strengths and their willingness and interest in the topic. You'll see names from across the organization, from police to fire, community development, our IT department, certainly finance, all led by the extraordinary work, and I choose that word very carefully, of Bethany Brewer, who really led the writing and the final development of what you have in front of you. Certainly Hugo played a large role in that, too. So the team did really great work together. If you can imagine, putting this all together meant a lot of hours around tables with a lot of papers and computers open. It was a little bit reminiscent of college group project experience for me, but nevertheless, I appreciate the hard work that went into it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bethany, who'll kind of walk you through how we plan on presenting tonight. Certainly feel free to ask questions as we present. We have about 30 slides, so we expect about 40 minutes of presentation, just to set expectations.
It took me more than 40 minutes to read this.
It took me more than 40 minutes to write it.
Well, thank you. Welcome, Bethany, in. And thank you to all of our staff who put in so much work to present a very comprehensive report. And Bethany, we look forward to hearing from you and the rest of the team. It's quite impressive.
Absolutely. Mayor and council, thank you. I'm excited to be here and be able to share this with you this evening and with the team as well. Like Greg said, we're going to kind of make it a team presentation, so you'll hear from most of us at the table this evening as we talk. I'm just, you know, we'll echo what Greg said. It was actually, it was definitely reminiscent of a, you know, college and working together on a group project, and actually was fun and a fun experience. We did learn a lot and are proud to share this with you this evening. So just a little bit about what you'll, what we'll get started with is really we started with what is the definition? What do we say participatory budgeting is? And we took that from your original kind of ideas and conversations about a year and a half, two years ago. And we really defined participatory budgeting as a mechanism to directly involve the community in the budgeting of their tax dollars. So simply put, we were true to that as we did our research, and throughout the paper we wanted to make sure we were in green in that definition. You'll see on the slides in front of you that we do reference kind of the page number in the white paper. There is obviously, we understand that paper's long, so as we go through, you'll see a reference to the page in case it's something you want to reference back to or look as we're going along, so you can see that in the lower right as we go. So with that in mind, with that definition in mind, just to give you kind of a summary of our approach of the research in the paper, like Greg said, this was an environmental scan to provide an analysis of 29 cities that have explored or implemented participatory budgeting around the world. So we focused on, it was 18 cities in the United States, eight internationally, and then three school districts, just to get an idea of the sampling of what's out there. The case studies is really a summary of those cities' experiences, what they are doing, what went well, what their process was. That was kind of formed a lot of the foundation and what we were looking for throughout the paper. So from those case studies, we found what were the concepts, right? The methods or themes found in those cases? How are they implementing participatory budgeting in each of the cities? Are concepts informed kind of some considerations? So what are the impacts found? What are the things we need to take into consideration when we're choosing what concept or we're going forward with the topic? And then our kind of our last thing kind of together that results in our conclusion, so our assessment, right? What's the assessment of the topic and what do we need to be taking into consideration when we are looking at all of the research we've done? So that's kind of how the book is structured. That's how we'll take you through the presentation tonight, kind of walking through each of those areas as we go. With that, I'm going to turn it to Jenny to give you a little background.
Yep. I've got some background information. First of all, how are people involved in the budget process now? In our current budget process, we focus on communication and opportunities to interact with the community. Since 2020, city staff have hosted 20 community events where really the intent was to invite the public to interact with questions and for staff to hear community feedback on the budget. I mean, other things, too, but we definitely invite those questions on the budget. We encourage people to ask questions when we're at these events. Staff from finance have been available and hosted conversations at six of these events in order to promote and just communicate more detailed budget information. In terms of print and digital engagement, this really includes some of the most common ways that we interact and broad ways that we interact with the community. They're some of the most popular and really subsequently some of the most effective ways that we are able to reach out. In the city's 2021 residential survey, 29% of residents said they preferred to receive city information via email, and another 20% said they preferred social media. By communicating high-level information on these resources and platforms, really we can reach a large number of the population and guide them to online sources for information. In the same survey, actually, a majority of residents, 56%, reported that they prefer to receive city information through the Burnsville Bulletin. That's our printed communication. And so really, that was one of the only methods that was preferred across all demographics, and we do feature articles quite often on the budget in that resource as well. In terms of our framework for our annual budget process, we really time it, as you see up there, with this being also a major component of our budget landing page on our website. You're familiar with the annual budget calendar, and really we've designed the process to really be, to inform and be transparent in our process, both with the council and with the community. Our annual budget process reflects the community's priorities, and each year we really work to prepare a budget that aligns with the council's vision, values, and strategic priorities. And finally, which leads up to final budget adoption in these numbers.
Thank you. Just with that background in mind, what kind of are the things that we're doing now to engage in the budget process? We're going to go into our case studies or our environmental scan. So just to tell you a little bit about those things, our environmental scan really was that review of the cities to find out what they experienced. Understanding those experiences helps us inform you all, council, and our community about what's been done, what's out there. It helps us frame those ideas about how to directly involve the city in budgeting through participatory budgeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Hugo to talk a little bit about kind of the data and how we approached that in the case studies.
Well, the value of this white paper really harks back to the integrity of the data. So if we were loose with the data that we were collecting or collecting erroneous information, it would totally affect the quality and the veracity of this report. So our data integrity came from two sources. One was the primary source, which is the originating agency, and in a few cases where that data wasn't available, then we secured a secondary source. Sometimes that was the media, sometimes that was other scholarly articles. But both the agency and the secondary sources will always be cited throughout the paper. So. And then important calculations based on that data are three items in particular, the participatory percent, which is the amount allocated to participatory budgeting over the total overall budget for that organization, the participation rate, or how many people participated in the participatory budgeting process as a percentage over the total population, and then currency we converted, because some of these were foreign organizations, we converted currency to USD or US dollars for consistency.
You probably have noticed in the materials that we have some appendices that summarize some of what you'll find in the body of the paper, and so one of those is our case study data that does kind of summarize overall the data that Hugo just mentioned there. So things like populations and budgets, as he mentioned, all coming from those primary sources and cited, just for your knowledge and background. That was very central to our focus. A few observations, just from, right, when we take it as a whole and we say, here's these 29 communities that we studied, a few things stood out to us, or a few themes that we found, patterns throughout. Just a few things to note. Out of the 29 cities that we studied, their experience, two of the cities in the U.S. ended up deciding not to implement. So as we're going through to talk about some other numbers, you'll notice we studied 29 cities, but you'll see reference later on to 27 who ultimately implemented or are implementing a program. One important, I think, just observation is that of the 27 worldwide cities that we studied who implemented a program, 26 use a project-based approach. We were intentional with definitions in the paper, and so you'll see we've, in kind of our key definitions up at the front side of the paper, on page 11, we've defined that idea of project-based that I think is just important to mention, right? It's really in project-based, it's that the community is allocating kind of specific funds to ideas that they've submitted, right? Specific sort of project ideas. So widely reflected in our case studies. Just a few more pieces of information. Nine of the U.S. cities that we studied have an active program more than two years old. So a handful of the cities sort of have sunsetted their program for various reasons, whether it was funding or whatever might be the case. A few, three actually have brand-new programs, so have just started within the last year in 2023. 12 of the U.S. cities use a consultant to help administer. So a common theme among the cities that we reviewed is that, in particular, there's a consulting called the Participatory Budgeting Project out of Oakland that partners with a lot of cities to help develop and come alongside in implementing the program. So just a few kind of wide observations about the cases, a few averages and some other data here, just to, again, summarize some of what we saw and experienced, and certainly this is averages, there's a wide range of communities and community sizes and budgets and all of that. On average, 16 out of the 18 U.S. cities that we reviewed have a population over 100,000. Actually, 11 of them have a population over 400,000. So just we're looking at kind of tended towards the larger side with larger kind of amounts of team members and budgets. You'll kind of see the average total budget in the United States is just about $4 billion for the cities that are implementing programs. That average kind of participatory budget allocation is around $727,000. Average participation rate in the United States is about 1.32% for the groups of people that are being directly involved. So that's just a summary of the case studies that we reviewed. Taking into account all of that experience of all of those cities throughout the world, what we did is we framed concepts, right? So we kind of move into our idea of concepts. Concepts are the methods, right? The ways that these cities are directly involving their communities in the budget process, the way they're implementing. We're going to talk about six concepts. We really kind of, our scan really narrowed us down to six kind of main methods for administering participatory budgeting around the world. They can be definitely broad and different in the way they're actually carried out, but we'll talk about kind of the six themes that we talked about or that we viewed throughout the case studies, and we're going to start with the idea of a caucus. I'm going to turn it over to BJ.
Thanks, Bethany. So many of you may be familiar with caucuses. It's part of the political process many times in our state. This is very similar to that, just not in the political realm. And the overarching idea is that it's a group of delegates that gets together to develop and/or select and prioritize ideas or projects. So it's a form of community decision-making that emphasizes participation, discussion, and consensus building, and it can be an effective way for individuals to come together to address a common concern or to make decisions on an important issue. So they're a specific team with more direct influence on the process, and there's, and a caucus is more, one of the most common ways to implement participatory budgeting. So in all the cases, this was one of the most common ways that ideas were solicited and prioritized. So delegates are generally appointed or volunteered to represent the larger community, so you have a smaller amount of participation. Folks are representing certain areas, and often staff or council members serve as part of the group or act as a liaison to help assess the operational and financial feasibility of projects or ideas. So initiative parameters and member roles should be clearly defined, and individuals, since individuals are community members, are represented at the caucus. Clear guidelines about who is participating, how they are selected, and how communication happens is important in the process. So delegates definitely help keep projects true to the community goals and parameters, and they ultimately help influence the success of the initiatives. So again, a smaller group of folks representing the community to vet ideas and prioritize ideas is the idea of a caucus.
The second method or concept throughout the case studies are neighborhoods, and you may think of these as, you know, formal established neighborhoods, but this is more broadly defined as just essentially geographic kind of near-home communities, or the commonality is where people are physically located in kind of a defined area. So cities may choose to prioritize or implement programs at this more kind of local or geographically near level. Again, just being in kind of an organized near-home community, which may be defined by natural borders, historical context, or some other kind of commonality of the defined neighborhood. And really, we found that the neighborhood groups kind of work to strengthen kind of social bonds and social connections within these neighborhoods, build a sense of community, but then also kind of work towards advocating for a shared neighborhood interest as part of the participatory budgeting process.
Another concept that we found a lot through case studies was voting. So really, the idea of the group sort of identifying preference, like collective decision, right? Voting allows community members to express their opinions. Oftentimes, voting followed discussion or debate, or like the caucus idea that BJ mentioned. So oftentimes, a caucus is narrowing down ideas for the community to vote on, to share kind of their, right? They would take a list of proposals and get to offer their opinion kind of directly in the process. So communities did voting in person, they did voting electronically, they did voting for young people in schools, a lot of different ways that folks implemented. This is typically one of the later concepts that would be used because it was usually after kind of some ideas had been established. So obviously, lots of ways to administer this and engaging the community in how to do that is important. I'm going to turn it back over to Tanya.
Next concept is workshops. So council would be familiar with this. This is, you know, a connection to the community, so community engagement, and those workshops can be coordinated in a variety of ways, depending on, you know, if we need to be flexible about talking about sharing information, what is the project, what is the idea that's going to impact people? Excuse me. And so it's really about empowering the community to be part of the decision-making process, and then also allows city government, city leaders to sort of understand what the needs are in the group, what matters most for them. And so when we talk about participatory budgeting process workshop, we're looking at, you know, how do we provide an opportunity to involve individuals who are most likely most impacted by the project or the idea? And then, you know, bringing those people into the conversation directly into that budgeting process, and then also just having that opportunity then to, for the organization to connect and educate, be transparent about, you know, the work that we're doing. So they can be designed to be really flexible, depending on the needs of the community and just some of the considerations that communities should think about, is just making sure you're engaging a broader range of members, making sure we consider who is going to be most impacted, and then just considering those individual needs within the group as well. So.
Surveys. Tom? Along with all the other concepts, surveys play a significant role in the process, and they were utilized throughout the case studies as an ongoing tool to gauge and acquire input from the communities. It's a tool to collect and organize the input that we would solicit from the community as it relates to participatory budgeting. The surveys can, in most cases, are done in many fashions. They're either electronic, paper, phone surveys, or other methods that are deemed necessary to get a cross selection of input and feedback in the process. They're not necessarily designed to make the decision on what to do, but maybe where to go, and we anticipate surveys will be used heavily throughout any process moving forward.
Thanks, Tom. Kind of our last concept that we talk about here is teams. So this is a little bit of a broad idea, but teams, we really say, are groups of people working together to lead the initiative, right? And teams might look vastly different depending on the community and the initiative. They could be convened for any sort of reason throughout, right? And a common one that you'd hear of is a steering committee. So oftentimes, a community getting started would set up a steering committee to help set up guidelines, to provide some clear direction. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but that idea of having just clarity around what are the goals of the program, what's eligible, what, you know? Oftentimes, that would be a steering committee that sort of leads that effort. So again, lots of ways to use a team, that's a common one, but there's other ways, right? Facilitating workshops might be a way that you use a team, so lots of different ways to actually go about using that to implement participatory budgeting. So thinking about those six concepts, those kind of six methods of participation, we're going to move a little bit into considerations. Considerations are more sort of the impact, the things that we need to take into consideration or keep in mind when we're thinking about applying those concepts. So you heard some underlying considerations as we were talking there, some of the things we've already sort of identified, and that we'll get into a little bit more. But again, it's just when we're thinking about this, what are the potential risks and benefits and the different options and just everything that we need to be thinking through? And so we're going to share six kind of considerations that we identified through our case studies and concepts, and Kaylee's actually going to share a little bit about the idea of people and who's involved.
Yeah, so the first consideration is people, so really who's involved. People are at the cornerstone of all participatory budgeting programs. Programs are really a mechanism to directly involve the community in the budgeting of their tax dollars. So when we're thinking about this, it's a democratic process that enables citizens to have a direct say in how public funds are allocated within their communities. Therefore, people may be the central consideration when we're thinking about these programs. It offers a chance for diverse groups to express their perspectives and needs and wants within the community. The biggest challenge being participation rates. When we think about the observations that we made in all the cases, the average participation rate was 1.3265 in the U.S. and 1.6638% worldwide. So just thinking of, are we actually hearing the multitude of voices with the challenges with participation rates? The next consideration is community needs, so what do they want? So an effective community needs assessment and response requires collaboration, communication, and engagement between not only community members, but the organization and the cities that are involved. Participatory budgeting provides a rather unique way to get to the heart of what the community really wants, asking for the voices of people within the community. One of the biggest opportunities of this is fair and effective spending throughout the community, as the decision-making of those public funds is made directly by those within the community, rather than just a small number of officials. People in these processes have more of a direct say to how public funds are being spent, which gains a level of ownership and passion for specific projects and initiatives. Where the challenges lie in that is this has the potential to divert some resources away from essential services that are less visible but critical to the community, such as sanitation and different emergency services. And these programs might offer or put more prioritization towards popular projects and potentially leave some of the community needs unmet.
Bless you. Excellent.
The next consideration is participatory investment, really how much to allocate. Through the process, through the participatory budgeting process, communities really are given the opportunity to identify and prioritize investments in projects that they believe will benefit the community. This could include investments in infrastructure, public services, or community programs. And really- And really, funding for participatory budgeting will, will depend on a variety of factors, really, the needs and priorities of the community, as well as the availability of funding from various sources. Investments for participatory budgeting can vary depending on a number of factors, really the size of the community, the available resources, and the scope of the budget. When we talk about investment in participatory budgeting, we're really talking about program costs as well as operating costs. And in general, it's really important to allocate enough funding to make it a, to make a meaningful impact on the community while also providing enough to ensure that the process is able to be sustainable in the long term. And the next, the next consideration is funding source. Really, where does the money coming, come from? Participatory budgeting is an ongoing process, and really securing funding that is sustainable over the long term is critical to success. Consideration should be given to funding sources that can provide ongoing support or those that can help build capacity for future participatory budgeting initiatives. Capital investment as a funding source allows the community to make long-term investments in their infrastructure, facilities, and services. It also ensures that these investments are made in an inclusive and transparent way with community members really directly involved in deciding where funding should go. Using capital investments can also be a way to fund projects without really interfering or impacting essential services or diverting funds from critical services. Additionally, capital investments can generate economic growth and improve the long-term viability of a community, really making it easier to fund future essential services.
All right, one more consideration that we identified through our work is our operational factors, right? How will it work? And so, there's definitely a lot of opportunity there. Establishing effective communication and strong partnerships can increase community engagement in the process. So, those operations continue to engage the community and provide more opportunities to, to share, to hear, to, to provide input. There's just, as Jenny said, right, we, we consider the operating kind of cost of the program as well, so that just, it, it's really essential to keep that in mind. So, it really does require a range of resources to be effective in the long term and sustainable. Things like staffing, of course, planning, technology, just overall kind of outreach and administration definitely does provide some, some need and some costs, and so just important to make sure to, to balance that and keep that in mind when considering the methods and considering the program.
From the legal perspective, there are some opportunities and some challenges. The, the council, from state statute, can't necessarily have a determinate perspective from those that participate, but they could have an advisory perspective. So, anything that would be direct and binding in the budget development process may violate the state law, but the council could accept any form of non-binding input from any of these types of concepts that, that they may choose in the community. And similar to other types of input we have throughout the budget process, it could be feedback to the community so that, at the end of the day, the council makes the final decision. They're not, you can't delegate your authority to this group. That feedback would come back to the council, and then the council could, could make that decision, or they could make a different decision based on, on the perspectives of the five elected officials. So, basically, you can't delegate your authority to, to whatever participatory group you have, but you could use them as an advisory role, like you do any input from, you know, the community surveys we do today, or open houses, or anything like that. So, it could be used as an advisory role, just not a determinate role.
Thank you. So, we've gone through the concepts, right? That's the methods. We've talked a little bit about considerations, the impacts, or the things to keep in mind. Really, what we did here is this brings us to the conclusion. So, for us, it was that we want to take everything we've learned, all of the, the factors that need to be considered, and then that's the final assessment, right? So, through that, we're going to discuss the benefits, the opportunities, the challenges, the best practices, the things that we learned in the case studies. And so, in, in our conclusions, as we reviewed the entirety of the work, we noticed three main themes, kind of as it relates to the opportunities and challenges. So, we're going to explore those a little bit within sort of these themes. So, people, right? We talked about that a little bit, but people is a really main, main theme that we want to keep in mind. So, those who live, work, and learn within the community, how we engage them, how we get them to participate in the process, the needs, right? What the community would like, right? What, what the community is interested in and identifying that. And then finally, the resources, so the assets, the tools that are going to be required to achieve this goal, to make it successful. So, we're going to talk a little bit about opportunities and challenges as it relates to sort of those three themes.
So, when we think of opportunities of participatory budgeting, it really comes down to, first one being increased engagement and participation of community members in the decision-making process, a better understanding of community needs and priorities since we're hearing directly from members within the community, and the ability to make targeted investments that address the most pressing issues that are identified by community members. Involving a wide range of community members in the decision-making process can help ensure that all voices are being heard and that resources are allocated in an equitable and transparent manner for the folks within the community. It can also help build trust between communities and the government and create a stronger sense of civic ownership and responsibility of public funds.
On the challenges front, again, there's kind of the people, the needs, and the resource piece. From the people's side, you heard about, in most cases, you saw a small percentage of, of folks that participated. There are also barriers that prevent some community members from getting involved, competing interests, conflicting priorities amongst stakeholders, and resource constraints that limit the amount of funding available for the community initiatives. And some of the other participation barriers that were identified were language barriers, lack of access to information, or a lack of interest or trust in the participatory process, which could lead to special interests really kind of taking over the process. On the needs front, really, it's, again, balancing those competing interests when there's multiple priorities and there's disagreements and challenges reaching consensus. On the resources allocated, you may have people that want much more done than the resources that are allocated. And then lastly, on the resource front, again, resources can limit the amount of funding available for community initiatives or for staff to carry out their program and get the right amount of, of input. So, that could limit the amount of input if it's not well-resourced, so.
All right, thanks so much. So, in thinking about all of those things, we really kind of identified six, what we would propose, our best practices related to participatory budgeting. So, we kind of say, best practices are the proven methods, right? What we found was widely recognized as the leading standards for the folks that were the most successful in, in the various areas of, of implementation. So, the first one is to build inclusive relationships. You've heard that theme a lot tonight, right? It's a lot about engaging the widest variety of people to consider all of the perspectives and needs in the community. A best, you know, the best practices in many ways are how we involve and how we engage folks and get them at the table. And, and there, you heard some of those themes all, all the way through, right? Whether that's language barriers that we're addressing, or offering workshops in a way, or surveys in a way that were meeting, really meeting the, the folks in the community where they're at. A second best practice is really align city leadership. So, we found in the cases that it was really important to have the key decision-makers agree on the program goals, the, the kind of the guidelines, the principles, what we're trying to achieve, and how we're going to get there. So, making sure that we have unity in terms of the, the path and the, and the reasons. And then also just to have clear understanding. So, making sure there's guidelines, managing expectations for clarity around what's eligible, who's, you know, who's allowed, how are we going to communicate? Those standards for involvement are really important to make sure that folks know how to participate, and folks know how to, what's, what to submit, and what kind of ideas are going to be part of the program and part of the process. Just a couple more best practices. So, another method that really was leading out there is to, to run a pilot. So, a lot of communities started with a pilot program, just a small-scale trial to inform decisions and how, kind of help work out the kinks and understand what was going to work best in their community. And, and oftentimes, those turned into larger-scale programs throughout bigger, kind of bigger parts of the community. So, that tended to, to help cities understand what to do and what was going to work for them and the needs of their community. We've talked about, again, this a few times, but just allocating adequate resources, so both in the program amount or the participatory investment amount, and then also in the operating costs, right? That operating investment, and making sure that there's sufficient funding, support to, to be successful, to really resource it appropriately. And then the last one is partner with others. So, as you, as you kind of heard me say up, up at, at the front, there's certainly other folks out there, other collaborators, consultants, community groups that can help come alongside in the process to increase the, the success, increase the participation. So, identifying like who are the other people that we need to get involved in the process to be successful. So, that, with that, that is all, that is the, kind of our presentation of the paper. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it back to Greg, just that you kind of heard him up at the top say, right, we have sort of these meetings coming up in terms of next steps, and I'll let you close this out.
Before you make your closing remarks? First of all, I want to thank staff for a very comprehensive report. So, I read every word. And you presented an overview of, of what a participatory budget is. What I liked about what came out of this is that we have shared meaning about what is a participatory budget. And out of every city globally that you have studied, and also the Burnsville part of that, is that we now have a shared meaning about what it is. It is about a participatory process, initiative, or program. What your report also defines, and I'm glad our attorney is here, because it talks about the property tax system in the state of Minnesota, and what is our authority, and Chief Jungman spoke to it. And I know that when we started this process, Councilmember Schultz, you wanted us to explore the idea that someone can say, I want like 5% of my property tax to go to a particular service, say police. And you have cited many case studies that does not allow us to do that because it has to do with the entirety of the budget process. And at the end of the day, it still comes down to the authority given to the members of the council by the legislature. Now, you can correct me if I'm misreading your, your point, because I believe that in the consideration and under the legal aspect, you wrote that whole page.
Mayor and council, I, the legal section of the, the white paper was written by staff with input from, from legal counsel. I wrote the memorandum that's in front of you this evening. But, but mayor, you're correct. In, in a nutshell, the, the power delegated to the city council to approve the budget is not delegable. So, the council is required under statute to approve the budget. City manager is required to present that budget to the city council. As Chief Jungman noted, the participatory budgeting process can exist within that framework. It just, it is an advisory capacity. So, we have to build out a program that, that gives that opportunity for community input, which would then go into a budget that is ultimately approved by the council.
Which, which is a great segue to some of the background material that you all have, have, have shared with us, which is what is Burnsville doing in that regard? And Councilmember Schultz, I hope that you realize that our city has done participatory process for many years.
No, actually, I'm, I'm very shocked. I didn't know any of that.
That, well, it's, it's interesting. So, it's a, it's a, no, it's all right.
I'm joking with you. Yes, I am fully aware of that. Yes, I am fully aware that we are actually on our way to participatory budgeting. The processes that we presently do are on our way to participatory budgeting. We're looking at, do we take another step?
Yep.
That's simple.
Yeah.
And as far as the legal opinion, absolutely. But it's very similar to the way that we have a citizens' task force.
Yep, 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 yep.
That is going through, and they're doing quite a bit of work to revise our entire code. There was a lot of opposition to that when that idea was first brought forward. There was a lot of opposition because there was a lot of challenges to it. Wasn't an easy thing. It was kind of a different idea. But what we're seeing in that process, which again, they cannot just say what code needs to be changed to and adopted. We have to review it and then make changes, keep it, you know, send it back, vote on it. But what we're seeing from that, the benefit to our city is amazing. So, that was just taking another step. Because again, our usual process for ordinances and codes and things like that is to involve our residents. We just took a further step. And I think that that's something that our city is really good at, which is taking that next step instead of just doing it how everyone else does it and doing it business as usual. So, absolutely, I agree with you, mayor. The things that our city staff does is already incredible. And the only reason why I think we're in a position to take this next step is because of the steps we've already taken. We're in a good position for this.
And I agree with you, and I like what our staff has done with the introduction of Eva and City Hall on the go. And the other thing is looking at the playbook. And I am so impressed when I went through the playbook after reading all of this, and I said, what is it that you have staff as your deliverables for 2023? Well, we've got a big parks master plan, an inventory that needs to be done. In that regard, it will inform us. And we also have groups that have diverse interests. We have pickleball players who want it, and we have tennis groups who want more. And I think this is going to do that. I like what Jeff and his staff is doing, where we're going away from code enforcement and rebranding your services to neighborhood services, which means that you're going to engage the neighborhood in problem-solving, some of those things that they talk about, and then get some of that stuff done. And so, when I look through all of this, you have all of that. I also, that this is already funded and approved for 2023 deliverables. Whereas, a lot of the cities that were through the environmental scan in the U.S. were using federal money, grants, state money, and very few used, oh, they used capital funds. But it was moving projects. And one of the challenges in reading all of that was that they were moving... And one of the challenges in reading all of that was that they were moving. Oakland, California did that. So they took some money that was going to be part of their capital improvement, street program, program in other areas, and shifted it to a particular neighborhood. They got it done, but it was an underserved neighborhood that they didn't take care of. That's not our experience. We take care of all of our roads every year. But some of the things that they did in other cities, Brazil, where, where it gained more awareness and recognition back in the eighties, it was all of those poor neighborhoods that didn't get attention. And then if you go all the way back in history and how all of this started, you have, it was all of the neighborhoods that didn't have the voice. And that's what I think the benefit of all of this is getting more voice. Because I'd like to hear, like with our park system, and we've talked about our neighborhoods down in southwest Burnsville on the savage border where we have all of our mobile home parks, where that park needs attention and it has been neglected. So I really like what we've gone, but you're right. We're taking it to the next level with Eva, and everything that our staff is doing for deliverables is excellent. But I found this very informative. And I looked at it and I said, okay, this is going to allow us. The one thing that a lot of them also talked about, Philadelphia and other cities, or Chicago. Chicago use CDBG, not Chicago, Detroit, and I talked to Mayor Duggan about it. They use CDBG funds and ARPA funds. But then they, they solved the problem in the one neighborhood that was underserved and it needed housing, and then they're not doing it again. But the nice thing about Burnsville, it continues. We do it because it's part of our culture. So you're right, we're on our way, and we're continuing to do better and better in that regard. And so with staff, the only challenge I have with all of this is where we've got budget pressures, and the other is that we have employee challenges, the capacity to do that. But this tells us that we can, we can do it for 2023. So it, it depends on how we go through this process. But Greg and the whole team who are a part of that, well done. Thank you very much. I was well educated, well informed through this whole process, and you guys put in a lot of work. So I looked at it and I thought, well, you kind of wrote something and you had all of your references. And you know what it reminded me of when I was writing my graduate paper?
It does look like a thesis.
I'm thinking.
It wasn't?
Future educational endeavors, you know?
You know, and, and I was thinking.
Appropriately so.
Oh, my God, I thought it was, it brought back memories of me writing a graduate paper and, and the time that went into it. But well done, was very informative. And heck, I was thinking, what expert is going to come in and say, you didn't do a good job? They'll have to look at the references that are in the back. Because when you have references from page 239, and it goes all the way back to 375, oh, no, 381? Are you, no, 83, 80, no, the reference is 280.
Don't add 100 pages to this, please.
So it's like, I, I, I'm going to say, well, that poor person, whoever that is that you're going to bring in, I'm going to be an expert to try it.
Could I add on to what you're saying?
Yeah.
I just, if you just give me a moment.
I'm just hoping we get to Greg, because he was supposed to give us closing remarks.
We're going to get to Greg.
And thank you for reminding us, because I asked him also, I said, are you back? He said, no. And he has to be, flight is at seven something.
I know it, I know.
He has to be with his young children at the airport at five.
We all make life decisions.
Amy's going to kill you.
If it's only for that, I'm doing pretty good.
You okay?
Absolutely. I'm just making sure we don't skip over Greg.
No, we're not going to miss Greg, I promise you. I, I'd like to actually commend staff on a job well done as well. I've never seen a white paper like this in all my years at City Hall. You guys went way above and beyond. As you know, I've not always been real much in favor of this process, but I said I have an open mind, and you guys did open my mind to quite a few processes that were in there. I do like some of them. But tonight is our white paper night. We got presented with these facts. We have a lot to ponder. We have our expert testimony coming up next and a few other things. And we're going to have plenty of time for discussion through all this, because I think we've all recognized the shortfalls in this and some of the positives in this. And I think as a group, we can come together and figure this out. But let's get through the process. And I don't think we have to, every meeting, go through everything all the time. I think we could, we need to take in that information, and then, then we can get down to our discussions. That's my two cents worth, and now Greg, you may have the floor.
We did learn quite a bit through this process. And I would say as a, as a team and from a staff perspective, we were intentional about not forming an opinion based on that learning tonight. We wanted to share the research with you. There's a lot here.
Yeah.
It's the understatement, probably.
That's an understatement.
So the process can help us digest what's here. And that's, and that's my encouragement to the council, right? We've got process ahead of us. Mayor, your comment on, on experts is, is absolutely well received, and we have some really good ideas of who those experts could be.
The only one that I saw in your report is the nonprofit from, from Oakland.
Oakland, that the participatory budgeting project is a major player in this space. We have reached, just by way of example, we've reached out to them, we've not heard back from them yet.
Oh, Jenny, do we have to amend the budget to bring them in? I mean, because we're going to have, we are going to fly them in. The other papers that we had, we used the university people.
I saw Betsy Hodges' name in the background.
Well, well, yeah, she was mayor of Minneapolis, and they didn't go through with it. Did you read the whole thing?
So she was at the, for, Greg, go ahead.
No.
Point being, she was at the inception when they tried it. So it might be somebody, if she's willing, to bring it in.
Well, she now lives in Washington, DC.
But she teaches for an LLC, and she's pretty easy to get her.
Yeah, so interesting to that point, a couple of options. First, obviously, some of our partners that we think about reaching out to immediately, the League of Minnesota Cities at the top of that list. Their new finance director actually worked for Minneapolis during that period of time and was an active part of building their playbook. As a matter of fact, just going back to the cases, Minneapolis' playbook is very good. And, and there are some, there are some, there are some really creative ideas that were developed in that process. So the league is certainly willing to come talk to us, specifically their finance director. We've also been really intentional about talking to these cities, right? This wasn't just the primary and secondary research. We've reached out to a number of these case study cities. Some of them have responded, some of them haven't. And we've identified folks who both had really positive and wildly successful experiences, and then some who suffered through some challenges. And, and I think we have some good examples of both who come in and talk with us. So I do think we can continue the dialogue around, around what the experiences of cities were and has been. And that was really the point of the environmental scan. We skipped some stuff tonight by way of a 45-ish minute presentation to you. And it's, it's all there. But I really do think that staff did an excellent job of delivering something to you, to the community. It's fair, it's balanced, it's thoughtful, and it's intentional on topic. As a matter of fact, we've joked internally. I sure wish that I could have found this paper online three months ago. It made my life a little bit easier. So I also think that we can be a good resource to those who are having this conversation. And you know what? That's, to me, that's what's exciting about Burnsville. We talk about being uniquely Burnsville. We talk about connecting people.
I've gotten contacted by three cities while this meeting was going on.
Copyright this, will you?
We, we absolutely would be willing to share what we found. And you know what? At the end of the day, my biggest takeaway, frankly, I wish I had come up with the path analogy, Councilmember Schultz, we, we are on a path around connecting this community. It's core to the brand that we've talked about. And this research, I would say, speaking on behalf of the team, certainly for myself, inspired us to think a bit differently about what we're currently doing and what the future could look like. And there's a real benefit to the community for, for that result. I'll also say that, that we did a good job on the, on the other side of, of the analysis to identify what some of the real challenges might be for us. Those are, those are outlined well here, and that will inform down the road in September as the plan kind of lays out the council's further discussion. And if you were to direct us to do participatory budgeting in one form or another, what do we need to be thinking about to make sure we're successful? So for me, that's the, that's the sum and substance of the work that we've done today.
Well, I can tell you, you know, I know you're trying to move towards your PhD. Well, if you want to use this as one of your.
I've already asked some of the team if they, you know, wanted to help out, and I didn't really want to. So the answer to that was no.
No one looks excited.
Yeah.
And I say, no, if you're going to write your PhD thesis, you want to do it yourself.
Quit asking me.
Or just ask one of the AI.
Chad.
Yeah.
Was this AI?
Absolutely not.
Do we ask ChatGPT about participatory budgeting?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Sounded like a yes.
That's probably really good.
We used all of the tools that are.
That's in the reference in the back.
You should.
It is good for research.
So different than Google search, right?
I will, I will tell you, I, it is a, yes, it is a, I, it is absolutely a new form of, of searching the internet that is, that is unique, so.
Yeah. And so, thank you. Our next governance meeting is going to be June 20th.
I'm going to ask you right now.
Am I in town? You guys did check my.
Vince looks mischievous.
Oh, yes.
Noting while you're looking at your personal calendar to find out if you're going to be here for the next meeting.
Yeah, I leave the 21st to my granddaughter's birthday. When you said that's June 20th, that's her birthday. But I'll leave on the 21st, and we're, and then we're celebrating as I get there. So, yeah. So the expert testimony is June 20th. So to all of the staff members, thank you so much. And thank you for all the work that you're going to be doing, because we are doing participatory budget. We just didn't call it that. We call it civic engagement, building community, empowering our citizens. But we now have a, a, a shared meaning and common meaning, so to all of that.
Thank you to Matt and Deb, who did a tremendous amount of our research.
A tremendous amount of research.
And who were here with us this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I mean, because it, it looked like a whole huge team of people working on this. You guys are awesome, just absolutely awesome. Yeah, Tara.
Yeah, and I would like to extend my thanks as well. And when I was looking through the presentation, what I saw in that presentation, how it was written, I could see that whether at the end of this process, we go with any specific method or do not, our city will be better and our residents will be better served. Because I can tell this was written, even going through the best practices, with a very introspective eye of how are we doing currently and how does that match up to this ideal? So reading through that was extremely exciting to me. And I know this, I know this was so much work, like undescribable. But I hope you all feel that as well, that just, just by making this paper, just by doing that, we're already taking further steps to be a better city. So thank you. I mean, seriously, deeply thank you, because this shows you, you were understanding the intent, right? Which is always the most important part. Methodologies, you can always look at. But intent, man, like, that's, that's the key. So thank you sincerely. This was great.
Just to let you know, Vince wrote a new paper while we've been talking.
I know, he's, he's running it through.
Okay, Dan King.
Vince, we'd like to see your paper next time.
Vincent, can I reference your paper?
I just emailed it to you.
He's got the ChatGPT app going.
Did you write a paper?
ChatGPT did.
ChatGPT did. Hey, I just did. I just watched it happen.
Oh, this has gone places I really hoped it wouldn't have.
I have no idea what all of that is, but anyway, Dan King, whatever you guys are talking to Chat.
Just download one of the many apps and have fun.
Have fun with it, yeah.
Well, I'll echo everyone's comments. This was the thickest white paper I've ever come across, and the content was incredible. I think, you know, we had a previous meeting where Mayor and, and Dan Gusserson were a little skeptical about, skeptical about wanting to go forward. And I think of Marcus Lamonas, is one of his famous lines is, trust the process. And we went forward to follow a process. And this due diligence step alone is justification for why we wanted to push forward. And it proves that it is the right thing to do to trust the process and be very diligent when you do diligence to, do diligence to a process. Because this learning curve opened my mind up. And I was already in support of this, but I had no idea there's 40 cities around the country and Canada and Paris have already gone through this process with that, that one entity that you named off, that, that you were worried about flying them here and funding all that, since 2009, when they really started doing this. So whereas I felt this was probably something that may have been tried here and there, I had no idea that there was an organization built on guiding cities through this process. And 40 of them have already done it as of their website. So I still think it's very bold of us to do this in conversations with some of my peers in cities around us. It's definitely raised eyebrows, and they're very interested in watching and following along, as Councilmember Schultz noted. Some, some people are watching right now, and they're asking more questions. So I, you know, I think this fits the spirit of what we are as a council and as a city. We're boldly leading, and this is another example of that. And hats off to the, to the, all the staff. And I love this format, by the way. And at Greg's direction, I'm sure, but to have all of the department heads involved in, in this.
People see, I mean, what we're talking about, people think that is.
It's a big, it's like a phone book, like phone book.
What's a phone book? What's AI?
Two, two ends of the spectrum there. So just incredible amount of work, and I really love the fact that everyone was involved. I mean, it, it really shows team effort. And that's all I'm going to say, because someone needs to get home, because I got to get up at four in the morning.
Well, I just want to make sure that we all realize that we can't deny that Burnsville has been leading in this space.
Yes.
We have been leading, and we have continuously improved the process each and every year. And last year, under your leadership, we took a big step with Eva.
Yes.
And, and putting City Hall on the go. And we saw what that did with members of our community, to see Eva out there and to have our staff out there talking with them. have our staff out there talking with them. So with every year, staff comes up with great ideas to improve the process of civic engagement and, and empowering our citizens to participate in all of this. I mean, you look around this city and you see examples of all of that. So thank you. Any other comments? So he can go home and.
I have a screenplay about participatory budgeting, if anybody would like to see it.
I think we will, we will do that, and we will, we, we adjourn by acclamation.